All right. Call the meeting to order. Welcome to the July 15, 2025 City Council meeting. Members of the public may attend the City Council meeting in person or may watch and listen remotely by viewing the meeting on Channel 8 WCTV and at the city's website at wyzetta.org/wctv. Public comment during the public forum and/or public hearing portions of the meeting may be provided in person at the meeting in advance or by logging into the Teams call and raising your hand during the public hearing. When your name is called in the meeting, you will be seen and heard in our council chambers and the cable channel. You will be asked to unmute, and then you may begin your comments. All public comments must include your full name and address, and you need to have your camera on. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge Allegiance. If I could ask everyone to stand if they are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda is roll call or attendance. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Parkhill is excused tonight, and the balance of the council is present. Earlier this evening, the council participated in a workshop and discussed the following: Discussion of the 2026 fee schedule and preliminary 2026 budget for enterprise and special revenue funds budgets. And then we also drilled into ongoing discussion of the 2026 general fund budget, and we talked about future council workshop topics. Next item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. I would accept a motion to approve the agenda as is, or if anyone would like to make any changes.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as is, Mayor.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next is the public forum. Just as a reminder, those in the public in attendance tonight, if you're interested in speaking, state your name, address, and indicate if you're representing a group, and limit your comment to three minutes. If it is on the agenda, fill out a form at the table in the back and hand it to staff. For those that are watching on Teams, please send a note via chat to staff and let them know what agenda item you wish to speak about. City Manager, do we have anyone on Teams this evening?
We have none.
Okay. Moving on to the new agenda items. Council, does anyone have any new agenda items to add to our council agenda in the future? Okay, hearing none. I'll move on to the consent agenda, and it's quite a robust one. I'll try to get through it quickly. So, next is the approval of the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda include: Approval of City Council Workshop Meeting and Regular Meeting Minutes of July 1, 2025; Approval of the Check Register; Approval of Municipal Licenses; Receipt of the Police Activity Report; Receipt of the Building Activity Report; Approval of the 2025 Sidewalk Cafe Permit Renewals; Approval of the School Resource Officer Agreement with Wyzetta School District; Adoption of Resolution 24, 2025; Authorizing the Submittal of a Legacy Grant Application to the Minnesota Historical Society for the Rehabilitation Project of the Section Foreman's House; Adoption of Resolution 25, 2025; Granting a Cable Franchise Extension to MediaCom Minnesota LLC through October 1, 2025; Approval of Replacement of the Public Works Garage Doors; Approval of a Contract with NCR Voyex Aloha Essentials for Point-of-Sale Equipment Software and Services for the Wyzetta Bar Grill; Approval of the Second Reading and Adoption Ordinance of 851, amending the Tree Preservation Ordinance to allow for the Exemption of Golf Courses; Adoption of Resolution 26, 2025; Appointing Mr. Mike Kelly as Interim City Manager; And lastly, Approval of the City Manager Recruitment Plan for the Permanent City Manager Replacement. That's a mouthful. So, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, or any items need to be pulled and discussed? I'd accept a motion to approve the consent agenda, then.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Public hearing, we don't have any public hearing items, so we'll move on to new business. First item on our agenda is consider approval of the loan agreement with the Lake Minnetonka Historical Society for mural artwork titled "America the Beautiful." I'll turn it over to City Manager, and I believe we're going to have a presentation from the Historical Society.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so I have a brief presentation, and then I'll invite a representative from Lake Minnetonka Historical Society to kind of dive into a little bit more details about what we're talking about tonight. And this item is kind of, it's kind of cool. It's a fun one because it's memorializing, the actual item that we're asking approval from the council on is memorializing a pretty special arrangement we have right here in the community room with the Lake Minnetonka Historical Society. And that is the mural adjacent to kind of the entryway to the community room titled "America the Beautiful" that was gifted, not gifted, that was provided via loan to us on behalf of the Historical Society. So, real quick, about the mural. It was donated to the Historical Society by the 1927-1928 Wyzetta High School graduating class, so it's been around for a long time. It was ultimately gifted, like I said, to the Historical Society, formerly the Wyzetta Historical Society, which has recently combined into the broader Lake Minnetonka Historical Society. And it's been an integral part and display of the community room since 2012. The request tonight, and we'll hear from representatives from the Historical Society in a second, is to merely just document the relationship that the city has with the Historical Society. They're doing a really incredible job inventorying and documenting all the really special assets that they have, and this is just a part of that process. So it's memorializing the agreement that we have, having the cool mural in our community room, and it spells out a couple of other kind of nuances related to that relationship. So maybe before I invite members of the Historical Society to the podium, any questions, council from staff regarding the mural or the loan agreement itself?
Questions of staff and council. Go ahead, Mr. Pluckish.
Well, I don't know if it's a question for you or the Historical Society, but now that this is on the agenda, I'm very much noticing this. I've noticed it before, but now I'm really noticing it. Does anybody, you or they, know who actually painted it? I mean, I think it's fascinating. It's about 100 years that the city's had it.
I think that's a great segue into inviting Sue Sorrentino up to the podium, who's representing the Historical Society, and she can provide a little bit more detail.
Welcome, Sue.
Thank you, Mayor.
You just have to turn it on, down there. There you go.
Question?
Yep.
It's good.
Got to get you, get you on.
Is this your voice?
Yeah, we just got to get you on camera for the vast viewing audience.
There you go.
There you go.
Okay. Oh, good evening, Mayor and councilpeople. I'm happy to bring forth this mural to your recognition. My name is Sue Sorrentino, and I had been a member of the Wyzetta Historical Society for over 30 years. But two years ago, we merged with West Tonka Historical Society, Excelsior, and MLM, which is Lake Minnetonka Museum, to form a new entity called Lake Minnetonka Historical Society. It's our mission to tell the story of Lake Minnetonka by collecting, preserving, and sharing its history. Tonight, I wanted to highlight a piece of history that's displayed right in this room. I've been working with Kathy Lervig on updating the loan agreement that we, Lake Minnetonka Historical Society, has as owners of this large mural on that wall titled "America the Beautiful." It has been on loan to the city of Wyzetta for over 12 years. As you already heard, I'll just tell you again, the mural is a gift to the Wyzetta schools from the graduating classes of 1927 and '8. Back then, some hundred years ago, it was customary for the graduates to donate an item to the school as they left. This gift was a creation made of three prints by three separate artists, put together by the Beard Art Gallery of Minneapolis. It hung in Widston School for 60 years in the hallway next to the library. When the building was torn down in 1989, the late Dion Straka, a devoted Wyzettan, asked if it could be saved and given to the Wyzetta Historical Society for preservation and display. Thanks to Heidi Nelson, City Manager, in 2012, we found a wonderful display home for the mural. We thank the city for making this local artifact available for our community to view. It's the kind of working relationship we hope will continue between the Lake Minnetonka Historical Society and the city. I'll entertain any questions you have.
Questions of council. Did you get your question? Yeah.
Well, my question was sort of answered, but another one. It's on loan to us, right? That's what we're updating. Is there any chance it's going to be taken away from us at some point?
I don't think so. When Dion Straka brought it to us as the Wyzetta Historical Society, we only have the lower level of the library as our archives, and putting it down there didn't seem to make sense. No one would see it. So we asked the library if they would display it, and they did, but only at a month every so often. It was part of their rules. They were not going to adopt it or display it as a loan. So we really did not have a place for it, and we are very happy to have this place and want to continue it.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Swanson.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I like everything about this. I just have a question, like, why now? Why is this coming up now to memorialize the agreement?
Well, when Heidi and I, I was vice president at the time of the Wyzetta Historical Society in 2012, you know, we shook hands and just said, wow, thank you for putting it in a place that doesn't get direct sun, that people are going to see, and then there's a little blurb that tells the three artists' names in case a person can't see them on the actual artifact, and the dates of their artistry. So we tried to inform people. So it was a handshake, no paper involved. But now we are a new entity, and we're putting our ducks in a row, and any loan that we have going somewhere else to be displayed has to have some paper trail. If you remember, we have this lovely little Tonka craft boat from 1957 that was donated to us. That's another item that we have to now, we know where it is, but we need.
Where is it?
It's up at, I'm going to say, a museum in Alexandria about boats. I don't know if you've ever been there. I have not, but that's where it is. And we love to bring it down for James J. Hill days, but we haven't.
It used to be in the brew works, in the old brewery.
Yes, it is. It was in the brew works upside down, so people could see its beautiful mahogany interior. So it's just where we're at now, being a new entity and wanting to, everybody understand.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions?
Not a question, but I'll make a comment.
Please.
So I don't know if you are even aware of the fact that the city is moving toward establishing a permanent public art committee. Councilmember McDonald and I have been on the steering committee to get us to that point, which is about to come to council. So I would just like to pronounce that this may be one of our very first gems in the new aura of, or era of, public art in Wyzetta.
Sure, yes.
Basically, I'm saying I want to put my claws into it. It stays here.
Well, thank you. Really appreciate it. And it is such an artifact. When you think it was in that school for 60 years. And I went to the school, I remember it, along the hallway heading to the library. So it's, it's good to have it here in Wyzetta.
Thank you, Sue, and to all the volunteers at the Historical Society for all the wonderful things that you do for, for not only our community, but now the 14 cities around the lake. So appreciate it very much.
Thank you. And I'll just say that the councilpeople, as well as city workers, are always invited to visit our archives, because now we're bigger than ever. We've got Excelsior's and West Tonka's archives in our, along with Wyzetta. And we're open two days a week. It's Saturday, I got to get this right, 10 to 1, and Wednesday, noon to 3. And people come in, use our facilities if they're writing books or looking for pictures for their walls. So, you know, if you ever have a chance to come down and visit, I think you'd like what you see.
And that's the Wyzetta?
Yes, lower level of the library, correct.
Thank you for the invitation.
Amazing. Thank you very much. Okay, so I would now accept a motion to approve the loan agreement with the Lake Minnetonka Historical Society for the mural artwork titled "America the Beautiful." Would anyone like to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make that motion.
Please, and a second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in most favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Next on our agenda is approval of the dedication of a plaque and tree to honor the public service of Mary Lee Borg Babcock. Assuming it's to you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think our Chair, Tori Schalkel of the Parks and Trails Board was going to be here, but he might have got caught up at something. So I'll take the presentation, and maybe he'll come show up. But real quick, recently, as Mary Lee Borg Babcock retired from her position on the Parks and Trails Board, the new board, earlier this year, recommended in their own action approval of a plaque and tree dedication of honor, her service really, for decades to the city of Wyzetta. Why? Well, while on the Parks and Trails Board, and she's done other stuff, obviously, throughout the community, but specifically to the Parks and Trails Board, she was the driving force behind initiatives and projects like the Big Woods, the maple tree tapping that she leaves basically by herself, the public art in the Post Office Park, the music in the park concerts, various events like Earth Day, removal of the, what is it, garlic seed?
Garlic mustard.
Garlic mustard and the buckthorn. Obviously, I haven't been out there pulling it. I need to. But anyway.
Got it about three days.
Yeah, I got to get on that. But the point here is, she's done a lot. She's really led that group over the course of many years. And as a result, the city has a pretty thorough naming and dedication ordinance. So anything that goes onto city property and acknowledges a community member does need to be approved by the council. And you can see on the slide here, what the Parks and Trails Board approved was a cherry tree with a plaque on it that acknowledges the service of Mary Lee, and it would be placed inside the Post Office Park, a place that she spent a lot of time and energy on, and that I think is really special to her and to the community. The Parks and Trails Board raised all the funds for this, so there's no, you know, impact to the city. And ultimately, the council just needs to approve just the concept of both the donation for the plaque and the tree, its location, and the plaque itself. And we, obviously, based on Mary Lee's commitment in service to the community, we recommend approval of that.
Okay, thank you, City Manager. Any questions of staff on this item? Okay, so I would accept a motion to approve the plaque and installation thereof.
Make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes. We had a very nice event for Mary Lee earlier this year, and a very fitting way to honor a self-prescribed tree hugger with a tree. So that's good.
Yeah, that's good.
So, next on our agenda is consider approval of special event permit for the Wham Fest.
Mr. Mayor, Director Kelly, and interim City Manager Kelly is going to take this one.
Excellent. Thank you, Mike. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Before you tonight, we have our proposed special event permit request for what is to be the Wham Fest, or Wham Fest. Typically, this has been held during the Wyzetta Art Experience. This year, Mr. Born is proposing to present this event with James J. Hill Days, September 5th and 6th, Friday, Saturday. The event is proposed to be from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m. Typically, our ordinance limits activities to 10:00 p.m. unless authorized by the council. The event includes closing the Beach Marina area beginning Wednesday of that week. Access to the beach would be retained until 4:00 p.m. each day on event days. This year, the events are intended to have approximately 2,500 ticket holders per night. And as typical with our Wham Fest, it is proposed to be electronic dance music, EDM. The permit application was received on July 7th. Typically, our new ordinance requires 90 days in advance for submittal. Our police chief has mentioned that with the reduced notice this year, the staff may struggle to staff the event. We'll chat about that as we have discussion tonight. Its permit fee has been submitted, and this event would be subject to the ticket fee of greater than $1 or 1% of each ticket. As you'll remember, past events, staff has received numerous noise complaints from each of those past events. I did want to mention, we approved a special event matrix. Typically, we would allow two Level 3 events in September, James J. Hill being one, Beach Bash, or in this case, Wham Fest would be that second. So this does fit within the matrix if you were to move forward with this. Typical event layout that we've had in the past several years, this is one from last The applicant is in the audience if you should have any questions, but based on the late application and some of the complaints that we've received in the past, it's staff's recommendation that we deny the special event permit, but we're open for any questions that you may have. And as I mentioned, the applicant is in the audience for any questions as well.
Yeah, I think we'll turn it over to questions of staff, and then we'll give Mr. Born a chance to speak if he wishes and address us. But first, questions of staff on their assessment and recommendation at this point. Go ahead, Mr. Swanson.
Yeah, so it's a 90-day window to apply, and applying in a lesser timeframe. So where are the real ramifications of that to the city?
Yeah, staffing is one, primarily. It's a little bit challenging when we have a shorter timeframe, particularly with public safety trying to staff the event. From the public work standpoint, it's a little bit easier. We've done a bunch of these events in the past, so it has less, but the less time we have to understand any details or changes that may occur, we need to be able to react to those. I see that Jamie's raising her hand.
No, one of your staff is up there. Yeah.
I do want to make a comment about public safety, is this does cause staffing issues for us with the volume of people that are coming in. You will be required to reach out to other agencies, and this really puts us in a tight friendship. They can't provide those services, and we have to start reaching other departments. So I think we're going to have to please leave some of their agencies, and they're staff. And they also have to be honest.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I don't know if the gentleman was there to see you or not.
He, I think he was.
Yeah. Okay. So other questions of staff at this point? Okay, Mr. Born, you certainly have the opportunity to address this if you wish. You don't have to. It's up to you.
Sure.
Okay.
I think I turned it off.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I have to turn it back on.
Green Means Go.
Let me know if you need help, Rick.
I got it. Thank you. Thanks for inviting me to come up, Mr. Mayor, council, staff. I appreciate it. I'll start with my sincere apology for not getting it in on time. There has been a new change this year from, historically, I think it's been 60 days. I went to 90. I should have known that. I didn't. Mr. Kelly, actually, in another meeting for, I think it was the Art Experience, we talked about it, and he notified me of the date. And so I apologize for it. A couple of things, you know, I certainly understand that the impact it has on staff and the police and everything else. It's been an impact every, we've done this, I think, over James J. Hill days. I think we've done it nine times. I believe we've done Wham Fest twice and a couple of other ones. So I do, we certainly understand and appreciate everything it takes to put it together from the city, staff, cleanup, and all of those things. I will once again say that we're happy to work with city, police, and fire, and everybody else. We have historically paid for the extra services, and we anticipate doing so this time as well. So the scheduling, I do understand, can be a challenge. You know, I would hope that in light of the long history of doing this, and for the most part, being incident-free, there was a, there was some noise a couple of years ago that was very warranted, and I think we've addressed that, and we anticipate doing the same thing this time, provided we're approved to do it with mitigating the sound, putting restrictions on the levels. And since that one, I don't believe the level, there's always going to be, whenever you do any kind of an event, there's going to be some discomfort. We try to minimize as much as we can, and we learned from the first one two years ago. And I don't believe we really had many complaints last year. We addressed that with the band and production and everything else. So we certainly won't anticipate to do that again. So that's kind of where it's at. I'm happy to answer any other questions that may come up, but it's, you know, thanks, Mr. Kelly, for putting the, kind of the diagram from last year. It's easy to do, because it really hasn't changed in about eight years, the setup and how we've done it, and fencing and shutting it down. And I think we're pretty good at accommodating everybody as best we can on this, so, and we would anticipate doing so in the future. So that's where it's at.
Questions of council, Mr. Born, about his application.
Quick, yeah, quick question, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if this is appropriate for you or for staff, but whoever knows the answer. Just out of curiosity, how much would be anticipated that the city would bring in for the ticket sales?
Well, it's, let's just say it's a dollar, because that's easy math. If we sell 5,000 tickets between two days, that's $5,000, plus the application fee, which is about $1,900. And as I said before, we'll cover all of the cost for the extra police that's needed for that event. So, $5,000, $7,000, I guess.
Okay.
And I don't, you know, there's a bunch of sales tax generated too, but that doesn't necessarily help the city that much, so. I would like to state, though, you know, we have historically been able to accommodate up to 5,000 people. I don't think with the talent that we've got this year, we're going to draw that many, but it could be more. It could be 3,500, it could be, you know, a night or whatever, but it'll certainly be capped at 4,500 people. So I guess that's a maximum of $9,000, or maybe a little bit more if it's the 1%.
Other questions, Mr. Born? Go ahead, Councilmember McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Born, are you, you're not affiliated with just the most recent?
I have, other than being the landlord, no. I did attend.
You did attend.
But I had nothing else to do with it, no.
I'm just curious.
Unless you really liked it, then maybe I had something to do with it.
Well, you were very specific about these decibels, and I was wondering if you knew what the decibel level was just a few weeks ago.
I did not. I did not check the decibels myself. I do have a decibel meter, but I did not check them. It didn't seem extraordinary loud to me, but there's a big difference between these two events. They're turned around. The one that they just had was facing right up the ramp and into the community, where ours is going more towards Excelsior, and letting them appreciate the music a little more down there in woodland and Excelsior and everywhere else. So was there, I'm curious, was there complaints on sound for that?
There were.
Yeah. And, you know, that's the risky run with the way they went with that. You know, for us, it was, historically, it's been mostly the base that went backwards in the Wyzetta community. And again, I don't recall, I mean, I don't recall many complaints last year, but there were a lot the first year, on that first Friday night. So we learned from that a lot.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions, Mr. Born? I have one. I'm just curious, as you've run these events over the years, how do you determine the musical format between rock, country, and EDM? Like, how do you come at that?
That's a good question. You know, it's kind of trial and error to an extent. What we've found is, the reason we're doing this is wanting to do the EDM in the fall. EDM is very dependent on the whole production, you know, the lights and all of that stuff. And the problem we have in June is it's actually the summer solstice. It's the latest it possibly, the sun possibly sets, so it's hard to really do a full show that way. The other thing is, the country and rock acts, we've skipped three different years altogether, because we couldn't find talent. And the reason for that is, one is the rock talent is, let's just put it this way, they're getting up in, you know, age. getting up in, you know, age, and it's harder to find just people anyways in that area. But in the country realm, all of those acts have been through the Midwest by then. It's kind of the fair is kind of the last hurrah, but then they start moving south because they want to play outdoor, you know, places, and in Minnesota, they're all done, in Wisconsin, that whole area. So they're routed through, we can't really find the talent on a consistent basis. So the thought is, going forward, it would be, if we continue both of these, and the city allows us to continue them, is we would do the Wham in the fall, when it's, you know, darker out sooner, and then do the country in, along the Art Experience weekend in June, when we can actually be in the market and get the talent. So that's kind of how we've done it in the past.
Thank you. Any other questions, otherwise, we'll bring it back for discussion. Thank you, Mr. Born.
Thank you.
Bring it back to the council for discussion. So what we have in front of us is a staff recommendation for denial, so I guess I'd invite discussion on how people feel about that, or do we want to move forward with that? Do we want to alter it to an approval? What are folks thinking? Would like to start. I'll start, maybe just to kick it off, just atypical, but I'll start out there. I mean, I'm generally supportive of these events. I think RBA Productions has had a good track record of producing these events and producing them safely. Where I get a little stuck is more about the format and how that fits the makeup of the people who live here versus visitors. And I can appreciate everything you said. It was actually really helpful to understand the cycle of talent and how that all plays out on a calendar year. That was super helpful, but let me also say, I mean, I went to the festival here a few weeks ago, and I do believe that we owe it to our kids to have safe events like that in town, and I'm not saying that EDM is, I think it skews a little bit younger, maybe, in general. I do think we owe it to them. I was sort of heartened to see lots of families where I knew the kids and the parents, and both the kids and the parents were there. It is, however, a little bit of a nuisance. I mean, I live right up the corridor on Berry Avenue, and I could hear it as good on my front porch as I could when I was right down there, you know, in the front row. So I struggle a little bit with the format and how it fits our community, and I think the other formats of rock and country maybe match the constituency of the residents here a little bit stronger. I would tell you, there's people that love having these concerts, and there's people that don't like them. And it's sort of, not black and white, but pretty close, people that are open to it and people that are not. I'm generally supportive of these events. I don't think, you know, Mr. Born had any intent of going late, but I also mindful of Chief Baker's comments about staffing. I mean, that would be unfortunate, you know, if we were scrambling, so I would be open to it. The one caveat that would cause me pause not to support this is that extended hours. I think pressing later into the evening is just a red line. I personally am not prepared to go. You know, it's a bummer to shut things down at 10 or whatever it is, but there's a reason for that, and I could only support this if we backed it down to that 10 o'clock time period. So generally, I'm supportive because of RBA Productions' track record, safety, putting on a high-quality event. Little bit of pause on the format of the music, and I would only support it if there's others that would support it, I don't know if there is, if it was backed down from 11 o'clock, so. Those are my comments to start us off.
I'll go next, if you'd like, Mr. Mayor. I'm left a little speechless, just mostly because of the amount of complaints that I personally get afterwards, and I've always had issue with how early it starts. It just sort of takes up everyone's entire evening in the community, and that's a real issue for me. The last event, you know, we allowed them to go to 10:30, and even that felt, by 10:30, it was like, okay, I could just see it, people had had enough. They start warming up or sound checks or whatever an hour ahead of time. I mean, just four till 11 is just a nonstarter for me. I feel bad, because I do think you run a better event than, because you have much more experience than the last one that just happened, but coming off of the heels of EDM shooting up the hill into the community and seeing the visceral reaction, I just am not ready to try, go for it again so soon, so. I too like the, as the mayor said, like bringing something for all ages and the younger kids, young adults, and the area is really cool, but mix it up a little, or start later and sooner, don't have fun right down the street a few weeks before. There's just too many, and then, of course, not following those guidelines that we have. I get that it's new and you missed it, and I think that's, you know, not something to feel bad about, just something that happened, but staffing, just too many, too many things. So unfortunately, I am going to vote with staff's recommendation to deny this event permit.
Thank you, Councilmember McDonald. Anyone else like to weigh in, or?
Sure. Well, likewise, I appreciate your initiative to bring some entertainment to our community. I think you've done a really nice job in the past, and regardless of what happens tonight, you know, I wouldn't want you to take any action we take as anything other than supportive of your efforts in the future. You know, likewise, I think to some of my partners here, I don't have a super-strong opinion about this. I guess, you know, we had a similar type show a couple of months ago, right, on 4th of July, so kind of do a same EDM thing with a lot bigger crowd two months later. I'm not sure, I'm not sure that the community would be very supportive of that. The disruption issues, I would agree with the mayor on if we do this, that we should put a 10:00 p.m. time limit on it. But it's also a weekend that we get a lot of visitors in town for a lot of different reasons, mainly because they're coming to Wayzata because it's Wayzata, and so, you know, we need to do some of this, but when we do it, we have limited access to the beach and the Marina area, we have noise issues. I guess I am sensitive a bit to the commentary from our police chief and from Mr. Kelly on the effects of staff, so I think these issues are more like a one and what makes the most sense. I just think in this one, maybe this isn't the right time for this, so I'm likely to support staff recommendation on this.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Mr. Plukas?
I guess I'm going last year. First, I'd like to state that, Mr. Born, you have done some great concerts here. I've been to some of them, and they are well-produced, and I know it's a passion of yours, and it shows. You do a good job. I also have some concerns. I mean, we extended the application period to 90 days for a reason, good reasons. We didn't do it arbitrarily, and this is well within that time period, and that alone is enough for me to say we should deny this. But on the issue of the type of music, you know, once EDM, and you even said that there were a lot of complaints, and you took steps to mitigate the next one, but every time we've had EDM here, we've gotten complaints. You may not have seen them all, but we do, so I'm not really a fan of EDM. Of course, that's not my style of music. If you had Lindsey Stirling up there, or Hauser, or something like that, I'd be all over it, and I'd be selling tickets for you. But I do have a problem with EDM, because we constantly get these complaints. So unfortunately for you, I think I'm going to have to go with the staff recommendation on this one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Plukas. With that said, I guess I would accept a motion, accepting staff's recommendation to deny this special event permit for 2025 Wham Festival. Is anyone prepared to make that motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I would have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, so I would move it to a vote of all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No, so that, the denial is approved. Okay. So moving on to the next item is our city manager's report, but before we get into that, I just have a couple introductory items, Jeff, and then I'll turn it over to you. So one of Wayzata's residents is competing in the FIBA U-19 Women's World Cup in the Czech Republic this week. Madden Greenway, the women's basketball phenom from Providence Academy and longtime Wayzata resident, has led Providence to three consecutive state championships, returning to her senior year this fall with over 4,000 career points. She's on track to break Minnesota's all-time girls' basketball scoring record and already holds the state tournament career scoring record for girls' basketball. She's committed to the University of Kentucky and was named earlier this year to the USA Women's U-19 Basketball Team, actually, June 30th, I believe, and so she's competing over there. They are 3-0 now as of this morning. Earlier today, they continued their dominant run through the World Cup, cruising to a 114-40 victory over Israel this morning, finishing undefeated 3-0 in Group A. And with that win, the U.S. clinches the top seed in Group A and will face China in the Round of 16 on Wednesday. The winner of that will advance to Friday's quarterfinal in search of their 10th gold medal in the last 11 competitions. So I just wanted to recognize Madden, and I believe there's at least one other Minnesotan on that Team USA for making your hometown very proud, and good luck to you as you pursue the gold medal. And earlier today, we transmitted a letter of support to her and her team as they advanced to the gold medal, so just congratulations to Madden Greenway, and I guess that's that one. So earlier tonight, we held an open house to honor Jeff Doll for his more than nine years of service to our community, and he is stepping down to become Woodbury City Administrator, and we're incredibly grateful for his exemplary service to Wayzata. In the interim, if you didn't know, Public Works Director Mike Kelly will be serving as our interim city manager, and this is, tonight is Jeff's last meeting, and this week is his last week. And so over the last week or so, Jeff and Mike and council have been working on that transition, and we're very confident in Mike's abilities to take the reins and provide us interim city leadership, and commend you for your 30-plus years of service to our community, Mike, and we're in really good hands, and so I feel really good about that. It's also noted that Deputy City Manager Aurora Jaeger is on maternity leave until fall. And then, lastly, I'd like to announce that Councilmember Jeff Parkill will be stepping down from his seat on or around October 1st, as his new spouse has a job out of state. The Wayzata City Council will soon begin a broad search for the new city manager, as was in our consent package tonight, and in August, we will meet to discuss the process by which we will appoint someone to fill the remainder of Mr. Jeff Parkill's term through 2026. Despite all these changes, our commitment to ensure the city runs smoothly, services are delivered efficiently, and residents and businesses feel supported remains unwavering. We're dedicated to a thoughtful and transparent process for continued stability and effective leadership, and we, on council, are committed to keeping the public informed in every step of the way, and we're all open to your questions about leadership transition. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Doll, and I know several of us will want to make some comments at the conclusion of your last city manager's support report. Even though we honored you in an open house tonight, you know, we get the last word, Jeff, in honoring you on the way out the door, so.
Is this the roast part that I was?
Well, it could be. I don't know. There might, it might go that direction, so over to you for your city manager's report, Mr. Doll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it, truly. A couple things. One is, want to remind the council, people in this room and the community, that tomorrow, more importantly, we're going to be honoring Kurt Klapprich at Public Works from 2:30 to 5:30?
2:30 to 5:00.
2:30 to 5:00, and feel free to come by the muni afterwards and buy him a drink or an app. Kurt served the community through Public Works for more than 40 years, and I think I just need to be silent there for a little bit, because that's just such a long time. And for somebody who truly cares so much about the community and is always there, always willing to help out, 40 years of that, so this is a big deal that he is moving on. He's still, thankfully, going to be joining us or maintaining his role as leadership in the fire department, but in terms of, you know, seeing him around town in the yellow truck and helping randomly anybody out that needs help and keeping our parks and city looking beautiful, he's retiring from that role. So please stop by if you can. If you can't, send him a note or a text or whatever, most people have his cell phone anyway, so. But really happy for him, but he definitely leaves a legacy and really big shoes to fill, because he's going to be missed dearly. So go there, 2:30 to 5:00, then over to the muni. Also wanted to echo the mayor's comments about Mr. Kelly. Congratulations. He'll be working in this role for at least the next three months, and would agree wholeheartedly that we're in very good hands. Mike knows his community very well. He's very competent, and he cares a lot, so no matter what, you're probably in better hands, let's face it. So congrats to Mike, and it speaks volumes for you to put your faith in Mike as well, and I know he appreciates that, and maybe there's a second for, or a minute for Mike to respond as well. Lastly, before I get roasted here, some of this is going to be a repeat of earlier, but as the mayor mentioned, this is my last meeting, and it really has been an absolute privilege to work with all of you for the last nine years and making the city and organization truly a special place to live, work, and visit and see its beauty. We have been through a lot, ups, downs, tragedies, more ups than downs, I would say, but we've accomplished so many things, tangible things, the ones you can see. You know, I believe from that perspective, this city is truly best-in-class, and I'm proud of what we've all done as a group. In addition to that, though, I would say at its core, from a local government's perspective, really what's more important and less tangible is providing the community with the essential services. I just mentioned Kurt Klapprich and Public Works, police, fire, all those, and the people and the relationships and the engagement in the community. That being said, what I'm most proud of over my tenure here is the incredible people in our organization that really give 110% and are committed to providing you, you and the entire community with the best services possible, from Public Works to the PD, to the DMV, to the muni. I mean, we've got so many diverse departments here, they all really care and give it their all. While we are very thoughtful and strategic in how we go about our business, we have, I believe, in what we've seen here, I think other people would acknowledge, an incredibly positive culture, which I'm very proud of, and I truly believe that that helps create what we've accomplished. It does, I believe, eat strategy for breakfast. Not that strategy isn't important. So that's what I'm most proud of, what I'm most grateful for, is just being able to lead alongside deeply passionate, caring, strong, smart leaders like Mayor Mullen, like Mayor Wilcox, Mayor Mouton, Councilmember Plukas, Councilmember Parkill, Councilmember McDonald, and Councilmember Swanson, and all the others that came before you. I've been blessed. You guys are so awesome, and you care, and you're fun, and you treat us well. You're not always easy, but that's okay. That's good, because you care and you want the best for your, for the residents and for the people in this community. And it's a thankless job, and I see that every day, the amount of effort that you put in and some of the criticism that you have to deal with. It's impressive, and it motivates me, and I know it motivates the people that work for the organization. I'm also grateful for the incredible relationships that I've had the benefit of forging over the last decade, almost a decade, within the organization, and there's so many people here that work or have worked here in the past that have an incredibly positive impact on my personal life. So in conclusion, I'll keep it short, or now I'll keep it short. Thank you for an incredible nine years, nine-plus years. It's been the highlight of my professional career and more and beyond that. I look forward to both maintaining our relationships in the future and coming back to observe all. all the incredible things that you, 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 and everybody else here will accomplish. So thank you again, and you all hold a special place in my heart. Thanks.
Thank you, City Manager Dahl. Open up to my colleagues who would like to offer Jeff sending off wishes here. Anyone like to start?
I'll start, if you don't mind. I am going to keep it brief, which I know is somewhat unlike me, but Jeff, I'm going to miss you so much and really sad to see you go. Goodbyes make me a bit emotional, so that's why I'm keeping it brief, but thanks for all your hard work, your leadership, the relationships. And personally, when I was appointed to this role four years ago, three years ago, something like that, but I just, you're a saving grace to me. I shouldn't admit this now, but I really didn't know what I was doing. And, but you gave me a lot of confidence, and you helped guide me to use my instincts, use my own relationships, and I learned a lot from you, and Woodbury's a very lucky community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Councilmember Swartson.
I made a few comments earlier today, Jeff, so just so you know, those were not AI-generated. But, you know, I'll always think of you as a close colleague and a very good friend. If we were, if we were younger, I think I'd call you cool.
Oh.
And that's right up there with good compliments, so. But anyway, I kind of told you earlier what I thought today. Wish you all the best. We're going to miss a heck out of you. Keep coming back and chatting with us, show us your sense of humor, and wish you all the best over there.
Thank you.
Mr. Plukas?
Before I talk about Jeff, I got to talk to Molly McDonald. If you didn't know what you were doing, you sure hit it well because you hit the ground running from day one, and you've only gotten better since then, so don't beat yourself up. You've done a great job. I don't know if I'm doing a roast or a serious thing. So I'll start with this. I said this earlier, but I'll say it again to the vast TV audience that's out there, is we gather at the muni typically, not always, but typically after these council meetings, and then it's a little bit more relaxed, and even though it's an open meeting, generally it's just a handful of us. And one of these nights, we were talking about nicknames when we were kids and things like that, and Jeff admitted something much to his chagrin, I think, since then, but he told us that he had a nickname, and as soon as I learned that, I put it in my address book, so it always comes up. And the nickname that he had as a kid was Squiggles, and all I could think of was Giggles with that, so. And that ties into his sense of humor. He does have one, much to, that's a surprise to most people that he actually has a sense of humor. Many of the jokes that he tells, it takes me like two weeks to figure out. Oh, I guess it was kind of funny.
They're pretty highbrow, though.
Seriously, you do have a sense of humor, so. And then getting more serious, Jeff, it really has been a great journey with you. I thought you did great when you started, and you've only gotten better over time, and we are going to miss you. You've got some big shoes to fill, although a shout-out to Aurora Jaeger, if, she's doing a pretty darn good job, too, even while she's still on maternity leave. So we are going to miss you. Woodbury is getting a great new city manager. You deserve to step up. I think you've earned it, and the city is a better place because you've been here. I'm going to miss you.
Mr. City Attorney, I know you've worked with City Manager Dahl and want to give you a chance to weigh in.
Mayor, can I just interject? I failed when I mentioned the city council. I didn't mention our city attorney, but he's the best in the world, and I have very fond, I think of him very highly, and I'll miss him, too.
Oh, Mayor, thank you for giving me this opportunity. I, you know, and thank you very much, Jeff, for saying that. I think Jeff is just, is an outstanding person. I think he's been an amazing city manager for the city, and I've been here through, I think, three. Lots of great things I could say. I'd echo many things that you've said on council, but I think if I had to put something at the top of the list, I would say it's the culture that Jeff has built here through his leadership style that involve, he's very relational, he sees the big picture, he's very goal-oriented, he's hardworking, but he somehow makes it all fun. And I think he builds a culture of respect and service that reflects the city's values in such a great way. So I'm going to miss working with him. Look forward to working with Mike and Aurora and whoever might come next, and of course, all of you on council, but Jeff, you will be missed.
I don't think I could add any words. Everyone did such a beautiful job, other than just thank you for your service, Jeff, and Woodbury is in good hands, and you're a dedicated public servant, and I know you've got many miles ahead of you to continue to serve, you know, the community of Woodbury or maybe even somewhere else. You're not long in the tooth, you're a young guy, so I think you've got a long runway to contribute to your profession, and so thank you for your service, and thank you, Mike, for stepping up. And with that, I guess I would close it out, if everyone's okay, and we would end today's meeting. I would accept a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. So moved. Have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're now adjourned.